Would you call to speak, your word of the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Carr.
Here.
Carr, here, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here, Osling.
Here.
Osling, here, Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here, Thompson. Thompson, absent, Frosto.
Here.
Frosto, here, Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here, Johansson.
Here.
Johansson, here, Holly.
Here.
Holly, here, Fulos.
Here.
Fulos, here, Vieira.
Here.
Vieira, here, Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here, Rita. Rita, absent, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here, call present.
Thank you very much. Next, presentation of general proceedings and motion to further city council meetings for the November the 10th, 2015 meeting. The motion by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? If not, roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you very much. Counsel.
You are all welcome to this evening's meeting. You are however reminded that the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation of the council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor, approach the podium, announce your name and address. Please be advised that comments may be limited to three minutes or forwarded to the appropriate city personnel for follow-up.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Gaitrol. My address is 12607 Artisan in of course, Blue Island. Good evening to everyone. And I just want to say first, Happy Thanksgiving. If you'd like to stop over, I'll have the turkey ready early. You may not have a drumstick. I like the drumsticks, but everything else will. Anything that's speeding, I don't like, you're welcome to. So turkey will be ready for first football game. I noticed, reading over the agenda, City Council, I want to compliment you. Thank you very much for this. The motion to establish a special committee consisting of five members for the Ward Map redistricting. I'm quoting from your agenda. I think this is a great endeavor. You know, it's time that our wards be either redrawn or considered or redraw. And you're going to have public hearings. You're going to set those meetings tonight. Is that correct?
That is right.
And so, everybody, I urge you, you know, this is a chance for us to participate in our government. I know we have a lot of students here tonight. It'd be a great civics lesson. City, if you would, I know I'm going to tell my fellow media members to attend these hearings because I think these will be historic in Blue Island. I hope you'll put it on Channel 4 because I think those that can't attend, then will be at least be able to watch and give input afterward. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Casa Blue Island has some proposed Ward Maps on their website. So I think if you go to the website, you can take a look at those. So I'm really looking forward. I'm going to attend all the meetings. Thank you very much, everyone. And again, Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Happy Holidays, Tuesday.
Good afternoon or good evening. I want to thank you all for participating in the 12 Parks for Christmas. A little information so you all know, you will meet at the park at six, Memorial Park at 6 o'clock. The security car will take you over to your park. The Alderman that win, there'll be a plaque at the park stating that you win. The Mathi family are donating all the film and the ink for the pictures, but we're charging $5. The $5 will go in the jar for the donation for Angel's Touch. Plus anybody that comes in and does not want their picture taken, that they want to use their cellphone, if they want to make a donation, there'll be a jar there. And all the money will be counted out at the end of the night, and that will be with your name on it. So you will be the Alderman with that. It will be donated to Angel's Touch. And it's 8:30. They'll bring you back to Memorial so you can get dressed. There will be an elf costume and a Santa costume. Did I miss anything? Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, what's your name?
Oh, sorry. Rayanne Cantalozolden.
Sorry, 12057 Artisan.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Would you help?
Any council questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
My name is Carol P. Green. I live at 2731 Orchard Street. This evening I had an opportunity to be over on Western Avenue. I did notice the handicap crosswalks, none are safe and clear. I'm very disappointed. I also noticed after the, granted, it was record snow, but the stairs to City Hall were not cleared. Is there...
I cleaned them early in the morning, and then I had another crew clean it in the afternoon. So it might have been me too when you showed up. When we hit the snow between about 3:00 and 5:00 in the afternoon, that evening.
Yeah, but for cars that wanted to pull up and plant and park.
All I can tell you, I cleaned it personally around 7:30 in the morning.
But today, the handicap crosswalks along Western are still not.
We'll address it. We'll address it.
Maybe we can make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy, thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Stevenson?
Good evening, fellow residents, Mayor Vargas, City Council.
Good evening, sir.
Blue Island is my hometown, as many of you know. I come here as a public service. I provide a public service. When I have questions, I try to receive answers. I come here as a public service, Mayor of City Council. On the agenda, you want to, you have a motion to appoint a committee consisting of five members. We already have a judiciary committee in place that is supposed to handle such matters. Why is judiciary not going to handle this matter?
Among the parties that that was the best issue to do with, a separate committee to do with this.
Well, we already have a judiciary committee to handle it, Mayor. This falls under the auspices of the judiciary.
All I can tell you, the parties who are involved, they said it would be best that we had a whole separate group to charge.
Who decided? Are the attorney to represent the city. Who decided?
I did.
Bob, really, they have nothing to do with that?
No, sir, I did.
You know, this attorney does do work for...
Does work for a lot of deals, I guess he does.
Works for you too?
Yep. Well, for the city, definitely.
Which committee did this come out of, that this attorney would be hired? Which committee?
My office.
Your office. And is there a line item for the appropriation to...
It's on my yearly budget.
It's under your budget?
Yes.
Under, under the auditor, John Kasperich, we're going to issue him a contract?
Yes, sir.
For this year?
Yes, sir.
And how much of an increase will that be from last year?
I think the judiciary, finance, one increase. What is Alderman, $5,000?
$5,000.
Okay, sir.
$5,000 increase. And to best, to best serve the residents and to get the best bang for the dollar, did that go out to them?
No, sir.
Didn't go out to them?
Given the work that is done for us, very professional.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Now, hold on. As we stated at the last, or as I stated at the last city council meeting, in talking to council regarding the remap, I want to talk to you this evening regarding the next steps that I think are necessary for the redistricting process as I had announced last week. As I said then, this city, this administration is committed to being accountable and responsible and responsive to our citizens to build a better Blue Island. Some citizens want us to look at changing the boundaries for how our Aldermen are elected and serve the city. And I think, as well as I think this administration, that it is a good idea. It hasn't been done since 1995, and it's about time to do it. We want to appoint a special five-member committee of Aldermen to review our current ward boundaries. And the, this committee will make a recommendation to the full city council, I'll repeat again, it will make a recommendation to the full city council on new map of districts. Can I have a motion to create this committee?
Your Honor, I move to create a special five-member committee of Aldermen to review our current City of Blue Island ward boundaries and to make a recommendation to the full city council on a new map of ward district boundaries.
We have a motion by Alderman Johansson, second by Alderman Osling. Any questions? If not, roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the council, the citizens here who are present. We will, I repeat, we will move forward now, and I will appoint these, the next five Aldermen to serve on this special important committee for the City of Blue Island. First Alderman would be our Alderman Nancy Thompson. Alderman Kevin Donahue. Alderman Hiro Frosto. Alderman Fred Bellato. And Alderman Adicia Slattery. Now I have Alderman Bellato service chair. The group of citizens who contacted us about our need for changing our ward boundaries recommended a series of public hearings to drive this progress. And we agree, I agree with this recommendation. Write down this date, the number, and time. The first public hearing will be set for Thursday, December the 3rd, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. in these chambers. Again, I repeat. The first public hearing will be set for Thursday, December the 3rd, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. in these chambers. The committee will discuss its business and announce its plans for additional hearings at this first meeting. Again, I look forward to seeing this committee's good work in the weeks to come and having everyone participate to make our city a better city. Thank you. I'll move on to the next part of business. I don't know if all of you know this, but Reverend Reinhart passed away early this morning. Reverend Reinhart was a priest, a poet, a radio preacher, a progressive evangelical writer, teacher, and activist. He was a priest in the Episcopal Church. He was the pastor of St. Clement's Episcopal Church in Harvey, Illinois, and also the pastor of St. Joseph, St. Joseph's Church in the City of Blue Island. Again, he passed away early this morning. Keep him in your prayers and his family, please. Next, as I mentioned at the last city council meeting, and I want to thank the citizens of Blue Island who have already participated. Change one light to green to honor and support our veterans. You can purchase the green colored bulbs at Menards for $1.99 and four come in a pack. I'm challenging all Blue Island residents to change at least one in their home. Again, Green Light Event is a campaign to establish visible national support for our veterans by changing one light to green. According to the campaign, green is a color of hope and well-being, and the word green light is a term meaning approval of forward movement. The campaign urges all Americans to change one light bulb either in your garage, on your porch, in your living room, at the office, and keep it on as a symbol of appreciation and support for our veterans. What I have done, what we have done in City of Blue Island, changed eight in our office on the second floor, so I challenge the City of Blue Island to change one. Let me move on. On Thanksgiving Day, Father Ken from St. Benedict's Parish, after the 9 o'clock mass, so from 9:00 to 10:00, he'll be at St. Benedict's celebrating a mass there. But he's urging all of us, whoever can make time and get away from their family for at least an hour, to go to Chicago Ridge. There's approximately 40, and I repeat, 40 Navy recruits from Great Lakes who don't have family here in this area. And if you can lend a hand of support or even help a hand in helping feed them, they're going to be at the American Legion Coast at 107th and Ridgeland this coming Thursday. I will go. I'm going to be there, so probably between 10:30 to 11:00. I encourage all of you, each and one of us, elected officials, citizens of Blue Island, neighbors, to go show their support for these young men and women. And I think they'll start earlier. I know Father has his mass here at St. Benedict's from 9:00 to 10:00, so he's going to leave Blue Island after that, so we can, everybody can meet over there between 10:00, 15:00, 11:00. So I encourage all of you, take some time away. Not only them, the ones that are there, but also the ones in the hospitals if you can, or if you know a vet in your neighborhood. Thank them and check up on them, especially on Thanksgiving. And on behalf of us here in the City Hall, we wish all of you a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Any bids?
No bids, Your Honor.
City clerk's business?
No business, Your Honor.
City treasurer?
I want to state that the holidays approaching and it's the holiday of giving thanks. And personally, myself, I want to thank the administration, this council, and all the employees that have worked so hard the past year and previous years to make ours successful every day, putting 100% on. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. City attorney?
Yes, there's one action item proposed. It's a resolution approving settlement terms for litigation pending in the Northern District of Illinois. A copy of the draft settlement was provided to you. It is still currently under final review by plaintiff's counsel, so once we approve it, I will finalize the terms and have the mayor and the city clerk execute it upon receipt of the plaintiff's signed copy.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Need a motion? By Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Fulos. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Committee reports, Community Development Committee.
Yes, Your Honor, we met on, well, this is the minutes for the meeting that was held on October 15th, 2015. Meeting was called order at 7:00 p.m. Present were Alderman Holly, Bellato, Carr, Osling, Pittman, and Frosto. Absent were Alderman Rita and Johansson. Also present were Bob Jackson, Jason Berry, Sean Terry, and Sean Howler. There was no public comment. Under old business, it was moved by Alderman Carr to approve the minutes from the September meeting. Alderman Osling was seconded. Alderman in favor, motion passed. Under new business, Jason Berry presented the building and planning report for September 2015. Revenues for the month of September was $32,413. Total revenues for the nine-month period ending September 30th is $352,662.21. Amounts are down about $20,000 year-to-date from last year. There were a total of 244 violations brought to housing court in September with total fines issued of $42,575. Approved business licenses in September include Crown Dolls. It is a home-based business operating in home administrative office. Providing order processing and distribution handling for T-shirts and other printed materials featuring company branding. Imperial Events, 11930 Western Avenue, Unit 2C. They will be operating a wedding planning and wedding rental service business, offering complete event planning service, wedding dress and accessory rental, and third-party catering service. Lee Homestead, 12126th and Sons. They are looking to operate a retail food store. They'll be open seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. They will not be serving liquor. However, the business does anticipate offering a full range of convenience store packaged foods and will offer a full-service deli, including lunch meats, sandwiches, and other related deli sides. Sprint Spectrum, 12125 Western Avenue. Sprint is sharing the business space with the previous principal tenant, Radio Shack. Changes to the store's physical display and signage will be consistent with national rebranding efforts by Radio Shack and Sprint stores. New business license applications in September included Magnum Insurance Agency at 12962 Ashland, Unit C. Fruit, Fruit and Vios Inc., 12255 Western Avenue, Suite 2. That was just a change of ownership. United Insurance Service Limited, 12950 Western Avenue. That's the old Lyric Opera Theater. They're looking to operate a temporary insurance office in the Lyric Theater Building in the lobby area. Sun Risa Family Dental, 13000 Maple Avenue. They'll operate a full-service private general dentistry practice in the Blue Island Medical Center. Anna's Bridal Boutique, 2357 York Street. They will offer a full-service bridal boutique specializing in the sale of special occasion gowns, dresses, and special event decorations. A synopsis of code enforcement issues was also presented. Mr. Jackson gave a report of activities. They're moving forward on repairs of the rec center so that it may be open. They're opening bids for work to be done, and the workshops start shortly. They will be starting with the roof so that they can have that done before the weather turns. It is hoped that it will be ready for use after the first of the year. There's a contractor overseeing the repair project. He is working on an hourly basis. There continues to be interest in using the facility from various organizations. There's a gym, a room that will be used as a satellite police office, another office, and a room that can be used as a small meeting space. Sean Howler reported Lindsay Dulkey is no longer at VITV. Ben Tamara has taken over programming. They will be doing some new taping for the channel. He's continuing to receive and compile survey results. We received a $1.6 million grant from the Southwest Conference of Mayors to work on the conversion of the Chatham Street Bridge for the Cal St. Trail into a pedestrian bridge. There is an update meeting on Monday, and finance will be voting on that portion of the trail going from Ashland East. Mr. Berry reported the first payment was received in October for July, the first month of the Business Development District. The payment was just over $49,000. He also presented two RFPs that will be posted, one for landscape maintenance and snow removal within the Business Development District and one for streetscaping in the area. Discussion of the RFPs resulted in recommending some additional items to be added to them. The RFPs will then be reviewed by the mayor and directors before posting. Mr. Berry is waiting for final approval from the mayor's office on the business owner ad hoc committee, which he has since received. And they will have scheduled their first meeting. Under Alderman concerns, there was some discussion about Western Avenue Bridge rehabilitation, which could be starting soon. Alderman Bellato wanted to make sure that we have hardening right-of-way under the bridge. A letter was sent from the mayor's office requesting that. The Jewel property is still moving forward. There is nothing new on the Walgreens property. There's been some interest from restaurants, but the owner is reluctant to do the necessary improvements to make it unusable for a restaurant. At 119th Street, they met with Cook County staff. The cost of demolition of the buildings is $1.3 million. Cook County committed $600,000 in CDVG money. They recommended making it part of the resiliency competition. If they get that, they would give us additional money. There would be a match for the city. There being no further business, it was moved by Alderman Osling and seconded by Alderman Pittman to adjourn. Motion passed, and the meeting was adjourned at 8:51 p.m. Our last meeting was held on Monday, November 16th, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers, and our next meeting is going to be on Thursday, December 17th, at 7:00 p.m. in City Council chambers.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Finance committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple items for council's consideration. First, I have a motion for approval of payroll, October 23rd, 2015, for $345,105.59. Also, payroll for November 6th, 2015, for $340,313.41.
We have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Vieira. Any questions? If not, roll call, please. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a motion for approval of the accounts payable for November 13th, 2015. This is for $612,349.99.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Alderman Pittman, any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you.
I also have a motion to approve an ordinance approving the grants of utility license and easements over certain property and authorizing execution of non-exclusive utility license and easement agreement with the Iowa Interstate Railroad, LTD.
We have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you.
Also, I have a motion to approve an ordinance amending ordinance number 2014-044, governing employee and retiree health contributions.
We have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you.
Also, I have a motion to approve a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by the City of Blue Island under the Illinois Highway Code for January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Alderman Fulos, any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you.
Also, I have a motion to approve a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by the City of Blue Island under the Illinois Highway Code for January 1st, 2013 through December 31st, 2013.
We have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Frosto. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, call present.
Thank you.
Finally, I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between John Kasperich Company Inc. and the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois.
We have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Johansson. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Kulis.
Aye.
Kulis, aye. Bieda.
Aye.
Bieda, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Yes, Your Honor. Um, these are the minutes for the meeting of October the thirteenth, twenty fifteen. Present were Chief James Klinker, Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Alderman George Kulis, Alderman Dexter Johnson, Alderman Nancy Thompson, and myself. Director John Rita was called to another meeting. Supervisor Jim McGeeber was on vacation. And were Alderman James, Johansson, Alderman, James, Johansson, um, and Don Marchbanks. Alderman Jan Ossling and Alderman Lady Maeiro were in attendance. There were no citizens present. The meeting was called to order at six oh four. Um, there was a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting by Alderman Thompson, seconded by Alderman Poulos. Alderman in favor, motion carried. On the fire department, the fire department had two-hundred-and-seventy-seven calls in September. One-hundred-and-ninety-six were EMS calls. One-hundred-and-sixty-seven patients were treated. One-hundred-and-fifty-three patients were transported, and forty-three patients refused transport. The fire department responded to nineteen general fire alarms and twenty-seven minor fire alarms. They responded to sixteen auto aid calls. Most were from Calumet Park. They had seventeen calls to man the station. They received two mutual aid response calls. The average response time was five-point-seven minutes. Medical reimbursement services for September was sixty thousand, sixty-nine dollars and nine cents. Fire recovery paid one thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents in September. False fire alarm fees collected in September were one-hundred dollars. During the month of September, the fire department was called out on three car fires, three stove fires, one structure fire in the Gaultier, and one car into a building. Under general information, new full-time firefighter Raymond Hulahan completed his daily training schedule and was placed on first shift effective September twenty-first, twenty fifteen. All shifts are staffed with one lieutenant and seven firefighters. One firefighter is still out on medical leave. He is expected back in mid-November. Uh, they announced the twenty-fifteen Fire Prevention League poster contest for grades kindergarten through fifth grade. They held numerous fire drills at local grade schools. They attended numerous block parties throughout the city, and annual grade school tours of the firehouse were started. Annual hose testing was started, and firefighter Randy Lookkey II passed his probationary period. Under maintenance, engine twenty-one thirty-three needs air conditioning repair estimated at two thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. This repair has been put on hold since it will not be, the air conditioning will not be needed in the near future. Truck number two, twenty-one oh four, and leveling piston repairs from certified fleet cost four thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Ambulance twenty-one fifty-two and the parking brake assembly fixed in-house, one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Under fire prevention, Lieutenant Olson inspected fourteen fire alarm systems, three sprinkler systems, thirteen annual inspections, and two special inspections. The Training Division completed four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-point-one-four hours of training for the month of September. And, um, the grants that have been applied for the twenty-fourteen AFT grant, we have not received a response from as of now. We did receive a response, um, and we were turned down for that grant. We have a application for a private grant out, but we have not received a response from yet, and a IDPH EMS grant that we also don't have a response for. Under the Police Department, the Police Department answered two thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-one calls, including four-hundred-and-seventy-seven business premise checks, one-hundred-and-one reliquor establishment checks. Under stats of interest, ninety-four alarm calls, all were unfounded. Three armed robberies, one was unfounded. One robbery, one was unfounded. Thirteen residential burglaries, three were unfounded. Seven shots fired, five were unfounded. There was one-hundred-and-four domestic disputes, two-hundred-and-seventy-three traffic stops, and a report of six catalytic converter thefts. Total money collected for the month of September was forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. It patrol nineteen thousand, five hundred and fourteen miles. Under calls of interest, on September second, twenty fifteen, a male subject wearing a dark shirt and dark pants with his face partially covered entered White Castle with a gun and told employees to get on the ground. The offender had one of the employees put the cash register drawer on the ground and go in back to open the safe. The offender fled with approximately three hundred and fifty dollars. The offending vehicle was caught by a red light camera fleeing the scene. The offender has been identified, and actually an arrest has been made in this case. Under reliquor establishment calls, there were four fight calls, four subject removals, and two disservice calls, and one call of a customer management dispute, and one loud noise complaint in September. Under training, two October classes have been added to the Silver Dawn Training Schedule. Under community policing, the Community Policing Unit responded to several calls regarding seniors living in unfit conditions. The Community Policing Unit also attended a meeting with School District One Thirty regarding the implementation of the DARE program, the GRAVE program, and Operation Love Saver. Community Policing Unit also assisted the Building Department with an aggressive campaign to enforce all applicable building codes. This campaign will move to each ward in the city. They issued two-hundred-and-nine citations in the month of September. Um, the Police Department has a new cadet in training, Jeremy Rhodes, and also, um, on December the fifth, the Police Department will be holding their Phila Cruiser food drive for Angel's Touch in front of a police station from eleven AM to two PM. On the nine-one-one center, there was no report. Supervisor Jimmy McGeeber was on vacation. Under BIMA, there was no report. Monthly health and sanitation, in the month of September thirty, health and sanitation inspections were done. Several businesses that may be operating illegally within the city limits are being monitored. Under Alderman's concerns, there was an extended discussion concerning a homeless person in town. There was a discussion regarding passport parking. Alderman Thompson requested that traffic on Longwood be monitored. Alderman Johnson requested a no dumping sign and a fence on the Kesey Avenue Bridge. Meeting was adjourned at six-thirty PM. Our next regular meeting will be December the eighth at six PM in the East Annex.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Municipal Services Committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we were unable to get a quorum for our last meeting, so our next meeting will be December ninth at six PM.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we did meet Tuesday, November eleventh. Uh, minutes for October thirteenth were approved and included in tonight's packet. Uh, the notable items from that meeting were that titles one, three, and five were, uh, reviewed and sent to council for consideration, and also there is, we have begun a process in the, in the committee for, uh, revamping the handicap procedures, trying to, uh, help our residents, uh, to be able to have us, uh, fast to process, so that we can sign and drop in the house if they need it. I do have two items tonight, uh, for council consideration.[1499.83]